City council meeting, today is Tuesday, December fourteenth. Um, I am standing in for the mayor tonight because he's not feeling well, so. Um, I'm looking for approval of the city council agenda and any other agenda additions or corrections.
Mayor Council, how many additions or corrections for you?
I'll make a.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mary and a second from Dave. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The pa- motion passes. Uh, for the invocation, we did not have anybody scheduled, but we do have Reverend Stephen Larson that has indicated he wants to give a.
Thank you for all. As a member of the Hutchinson Equi Medical Minister Association, I want to thank the city for your openness and support of the various expressions of faith within our community. We at Oak Heights Covenant Church uphold the city and leaders with our regular prayers, and I'm grateful to share this prayer with you today in this season. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, every perfect gift comes from you. And in this season, we thank you for the gift of your son, Jesus Christ. This evening, I pray for the gifts of wisdom, unity, and peace to be poured out upon our city council members. May they graciously hear each item that is put before them today and make clear decisions that will continue to assist this community in its growth. May Hutchinson continue to be a city where families make their homes, where children can learn and play and grow in safety, where people at whatever stage of life find care and compassion, and where all people will thrive. At this time of year, I lift in prayer for any family or person experiencing the empty chair of a loved one who is no longer there. May we be a community that protects and uplifts the vulnerable and the brokenhearted. Sustaining Lord, may your presence be felt through the loving actions of others who show care. May our actions lift heavy hearts. Now bless each council member as they carry out their work. I pray for Mary, Chad, Dave, Pat, and especially tonight, Mayor Gary not feeling well. May they have a sense of satisfaction in the work that will be accomplished here tonight. In your gracious name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next, we have recognition for recognition of gifts, donations, and community service in the city. Um, agenda item A, we have resolution number one five three eight two, and that's a resolution accepting a $2,500 donation from the Hutchinson Rotary Club for additional amenities at Rotary Park. And we have some representatives from the Rotary here tonight. They could come forward.
Good evening.
Turn it up loud for us.
My name is Ben King with Hutchinson Rotary.
I'm Giudiano with Rotary Club.
And we're here tonight to present, uh, as Mr. Chosnowski said, a $2,500 check for fundraising efforts in June of this year, in which we had a number of different organizations meet at Rotary Park, um, including the Hutchinson J.C.'s to hand out bike helmets for the youth at no cost. Um, the, um, Bike Club, uh, to help kids with, uh, bike checks and safety. The Dare Princesses came and handed out ice cream. And there was, um, a nice little feedbag as well. Uh, fund was had by all, and it was, oh, also the, the fire department came and the police department also came with, uh, trucks for the kids. So again, fund was had by all, and we are proud to present, uh, this check as the fruits of our labor for more improvements to the park. So I think you guys are, you guys looking for a picture?
Picture, yeah, that'd be great.
Sure. So if you want to, I don't know how you guys want to do it, right in front of, uh, the four council members and.
They can stand.
You guys want to stand, so however you guys want to do it.
Walk down there.
So.
That's his one. Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Well, thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you to the Rotary. Um, Rotary Park's an incredible facility, and they've raised a ton of money to make it what it is, so thank you. Um, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution. So move.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion from Pat, a second from Dave. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Um, next, we have a donation from the Lions, and we have Jan from the Lions here. Welcome.
My name is Jan Sebastian. I am the vice president of our Hutchinson Lions.
You're not related to Dave, are you?
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm the vice president of the Hutchinson Lions Club, and I am here to present the city of Hutchinson a check for $1,620. It is our second of five payments for our Lions Club that is over in our southwest on, um, I think it's Southwest Street in Hutchinson. Um, that's it. I live here in. I'm supposed to tell you my address. I live at two two five Dale Street.
Perfect. And we'll, um, we'll put a resolution together for our next meeting to do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, so.
So as a note, the new park at Lions Park is a great facility as well. Um, they have a neat little like buddy swing that an older person, like an older kid can swing with a little kid, and my older kid and little kid love it, so it's it's a great little deal, and it's much nicer than the previous facilities, so thank you to.
And I appreciate the help of, uh, the city, uh, council and the P R or portion rec to get that done, so.
All right, so Matt, do we need a president?
Nope, we'll do that at a future.
All right, next, we have citizens addressing the city council. Does anybody in the audience want to come up and give their two cents? Nobody? Um, next, we have approval of minutes. Um, A, we have the regular meeting of November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. And next, we have the truth and taxation hearing of December seventh, twenty twenty-one. Looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
So we have a, uh, motion by Dave and a second by Mary. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next, we have the consent agenda. Um, I'll read them all off and we can approve them as necessary. We have the considera- item A, we have consideration for approval of off-site gambling for Hutchinson Hockey Association at the Crow River Golf Club on February fifth, twenty twenty-two. B, we have consideration for approval of issuing a short-term gambling license to McLeod County Pheasants Forever on March twelfth, twenty twenty-two at the McLeod County Fairgrounds. C, we have consideration for approval of twenty twenty-two license renewals. D, we have consideration for approval of the twenty twenty-two invocation schedule. E, we have consideration for approval of appointments to the senior advisory board. The reappointment of Al Barkin to January twenty twenty-five. The appointment of Randy Cant to January twenty twenty-four, filling in for Michael Becker's term. F, we have the appointment of Kathy Silvernail to the Hutchinson Utilities Commission to December twenty twenty-six. G, we have consideration for approval of use of a portion of the city parking lot for the private food truck for a graduation party on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, as requested by Robin Detman. H, we have consideration for approval of the improvement project change order numbers four, five, six, and seven of the wastewater treatment facility headworks improvement, letting number three, project number one twenty, or project number twenty-one dash oh-three. I, we have consideration of approval of amended and related development agreement between the city of Hutchinson and Silver Lake Capital Partners LLC. J, we have consideration for approval of resolution number one five three seven nine, the resolution to sell at auction forfeited vehicles. And K, we have claims appropriations and contract payments, register A. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off for further discussion? Okay, then we're looking for a, uh, motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Pat and a second by Dave. Um, any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Um, and then, um, consent agenda two, um, Gary has a check on there, I believe, which is a moot point because he's not here, but, uh, looking for an approval.
I'll make that motion, approve that.
I will say.
Sorry.
Whatever.
He's not here, so if you don't.
Stick it to him, Pat. So we have a motion by Mary and a second by Pat. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, we have a public hearing at six, um, so we have a little time here. We can go on to communications, requests, and petitions. Um, Matt, we have the review of the truth and taxation hearing held on December seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Quick second here. Right, Mayor Council, thanks. Um, we do this kind of every year after our truth and taxation. We just have a kind of a quick follow-up. Um, just to, I guess, get some additional comments or feedbacks from the council prior to staff bringing forward the the final approval items at, at our next meeting. And so what I generally do is I'll spend ten minutes just kind of giving a brief summary of all the things that we talked about at our truth and taxation hearing, and then offer it back to you guys for any additional feedbacks or, or comments. So briefly, and, um, as we talked about, uh, last week at our truth and taxation hearing, um, these, uh, up on the screen were the proposed, um, levies that were adopted by the city council back in September. And at that point, we were looking at a general fund tax increase of three point three percent, um, with a debt fund increase of sixteen point two percent, with an overall, um, city tax increase of seven percent. Um, and we noted the, the EDA levy was at eleven point two, and the H R A levy was at four percent. Once again, those are two levies that are done by other boards, but the city council has to sign off on, on those requests, and so we're looking at a total tax impact of a seven percent increase. That's when I, that's what, what went out to the public in November, um, when they received our tax statements, um, from the city was, um, a city tax increase of seven percent. Since that initial, I guess, preliminary levy was adopted in September, um, through conversations that Andy and I had with department directors and, and some feedback were received from, uh, the council. Um, we went back and looked at, um, some additional changes. Um, one was just a slight decrease in, in our general fund. We're still looking at three point two percent. I think the more significant change was in our debt service funds, um, at a six point seven percent increase with the total city tax increase of four point two percent is what's being proposed right now for the council to consider later this month. On top of that, the EDA did adjust their levy a little bit, and they're looking at now a nine percent increase, about eighteen thousand dollars, um, with the H R remaining there, or keeping theirs at a four percent increase for a total tax impact of, of four point three percent. And so we've cut roughly two point seven percent off, um, proposed tax levy, which is about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from what was discussed back in September. And I noted this at the truth and taxation hearing. Statewide, um, the preliminary, preliminary average le- or levy for cities was at six and six point six percent. So we were slightly above that back in September, um, with the overall state increase at being four and a half percent. That includes, um, county, townships, um, any other special, uh, taxing districts, school districts is included in all, in all of that. Um, we touched on, um, what that, that meant for, uh, a tax impact. The foreright column is what our September, um, tax label look like with a home valued at roughly, um, two hundred thousand dollars next year, was looking at about a sixty-two dollar, um, impact on the city taxes. Um, with the changes that were proposed and we're looking to implement, um, we're not looking at about a thirty-three dollar impact on a home that's valued at two hundred thousand. We touched on our, our general fund revenues. We're looking to go up about two percent. Included within those revenues is the property tax increase of three point two percent within our general fund. Um, other taxes, that's our, um, our lodging tax, and then our franchise tax for, um, for cable TV. Um, we have a pretty significant increase in license and permits. That's just, we're continuing to see, uh, expansion within the community, and so we're factored in those, those building permits. Um, the rest of the other revenue remains relatively flat, but overall, we're looking at about a two percent increase in, in proposed revenues within our general fund for next year. As you break that down, roughly forty percent of that is taxes. Um, twenty percent is transfer in. That's the money that we're getting from Hutch Utilities, from the liquor store, from Creekside, um, water sewer are all factored into that twenty percent transfer in. Um, both percentages are roughly the same as what they've been, um, probably the last five or six years historically. Top of that, we looked at, uh, proposed general fund expenses for next year, which are matching the two percent increase in revenues with two percent increase in expenses. Um, we talked about roughly sixty-eight percent of our general fund expenses go to wages and benefits, and so that accounts for about a two percent increase within, uh, the budget for next year, and that includes all the proposed changes with the, the compensation plan that we have looked at over the last month. Otherwise, revenue remains relatively flat as, as well within, um, or I mean, expenses remain relatively flat compared to, to years past. I think staff and directors did a really good job, um, really outside of, uh, costs for, um, for staffing, kind of keeping budgets tact. You know, I think there's some inflationary, um, expected fuel cost increase that are factored into it, but generally, um, our expenses have remained relatively fat, flat for next year. Um, and that's just a breakdown of where those general fund expenses go. Once again, that's historically been about the, the same breakdown amongst the various different departments within the, within the general fund. We touched on, um, the, the, the debt management plan and really the changes that we, uh, that we incurred, uh, that we looked at. That was probably the most significant change from September to where we are today, um, is that we're, we're looking to really to reduce the debt impact for next year. Um, uh, as we noted, it was about a sixteen percent increase. Originally, now we're down to about a seven percent. Um, also, that has to do with us using to look about a million dollars in reserves to, to soften that, that levy impact, um, for next year. And, uh, the graph above just kind of is a summary of what our, our new projected debt levy is going to look like. That, the area in yellow is the, the impact of the, the new PlayStation. And future debts. And as we talked about, just to highlight that, because that does have a, a major impact in our budget for next year. Um, but the new police facility does include a new department of motor vehicle office and emergency operations center. Um, the new facility will haul us all vehicles inside. We talked about how that was, uh, one of the needed functions with the amount of equipment that's now included with all of our, our police vehicles is to get them inside, outside of, out, out of the weather. Um, the new facility will not have a dispatch center, um, which is about a savings of about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, right now, the total project costs are about thirteen point nine six million. Um, we talked about, obviously, you, you've got contingencies that are built in that, and you just don't know really until the, the end of the project what those to- total costs are, are going to account for. But we highlighted that our funding sources at three million of that was coming from hospital proceeds. Um, another one million we talked about taken out of reserves. Um, eventually, we'll have the proceeds from the, the sale of our, our current police facility, E O C building, with the remaining costs um, coming from bonding, borrowing, and that's what's factored into the, the large increase next year. Doesn't include the cost for the, the extension or storm pond, as we noted, the final cost won't really be known until, until next year. So a summary of the summary, general fund revenues are projected to go up two percent next year with the expenses matching that two percent increase. We're projecting a three point two percent general levy tax increase, a six point seven percent debt levy tax increase with a total, um, city tax increase of four per two, four point two percent, which is down from seven percent in September. And when you add the, the request that's coming from the EDA and the H R A, that makes an overall total tax impact of about four point three percent. Um, the two biggest factors behind the levy increase, one being the general wage and benefit increases along with staff changes and additional seasonal temporary pay increases. I expect to the cost of city, an additional roughly a hundred ninety-eight thousand in twenty twenty-two. And the debt for the new police facility will increase our debt levy by about a hundred and forty-eight, um, thousand dollars next year. Couple other things, uh, outside of eliminating the dispatch center, the budget includes no other significant increases or cuts in staffing or changes in service. As in years past, staffing costs and capital needs are the biggest driver of our budget. Um, the new police facility will have a financial impact on the city. It shouldn't be a surprise to us. Um, thumbbouts has continued to remain high, and the fiscal condition of the city is healthy. We noted the state's budget forecast has a surplus, um, anticipated record surplus, so we're, that should have hopefully no impact on, on us when it comes to, um, our budget or any, any shortfalls from the state. Um, home values continue to increase, and the city's continuing to see growth at all levels, um, including multifamily residential, commercial, industrial. And obviously, inflation, inflation and supply and chain issues are impacting the city as well, like it is kind of everyone else, and so. So that's a quick run-through of my hour and ten-minute presentation. Um, and so really, the next steps are, councilor is going to approve the final budgets and levy at the, at the December twenty-eighth city council meeting, and those have to be certified by December thirtieth. And so I guess before we prevent our, present our final budgets next, at our next council meeting, we always wanted to provide this opportunity. You've had your truth and taxation hearing. You know, and maybe there was, uh, some feedback after that, but just to see with the council if you're still comfortable with where we're at, or if you're looking to see anything changed between, I guess, now and two weeks from now.
I'm comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable with what was presented.
I appreciate the fact that you guys did a little homework and were able to cut some stuff. I know it's not easy because I think we do have great services and that, you know, cutting is never easy, but I also think it's part of what we have to do to kind of maintain a decent monetary program.
So that was it. We usually like to try to do, present this meeting, just kind of be a quick follow-up in case there was, um, some additional feedback we needed to have from the truth and taxation hearing, so. Said, if not, Andy and I will continue to move forward with what we're planning for, um, our next meeting, so thanks, everybody, and probably hand it over to Chad. You can probably go to the next item with, I think, all your presenting, so.
All right, um, agenda item number twelve is the discussion of the voting hours for the February, February eighth, twenty twenty-two city special election.
Sorry, that's ours too. Um, we have obviously our special election that's coming up on February, I mean, Melissa, eighth. It's obviously, uh, not a normal election, um, with one position being up for, um, to vote on. And I guess the question that we had with the council is, one of the things that we normally don't talk about because we just kind of move forward with elections, but we do have the option of reducing hours for voting. Generally, we have voting from seven in the morning to eight at night. Um, I think the minimum would be from, was it five to eight, Melissa? Um, townships, I think it's, or some cities do it from, what, ten in the morning to eight at night? So I guess that, we just wanted to pose that question to the council with it not being a general election. If there was any desire to look at changing the, the voting hours, because I think if we were to do that, we'd have to have, is it a resolution, Melissa? Probably had a, had the next council meeting to officially change those, those hours if there's any desire to do that.
Is it much of a hardship just to leave it what it normally is, just because that's what people are used to and, and they can work around their work schedule a little bit?
No.
I think our best option is just to leave it. It will, it will just confuse people. And if you have people who work shifts and want to go right in the morning, or go to work at eight, they can vote at seven.
Sure.
Yeah.
No, we felt, you know, we thought it'd be appropriate to at least pose a question to the council because it, you know, most likely it'll be a long day for all of our elections, and it's not that they wouldn't do it, but we thought it'd be fair to at least ask that question to the, to the council. Um, except you, we'd have to do a resolution, but. Melissa, anything else? You're the one who really does all the work behind. Behind that, so.
It's fine.
We, we heard that fine.
Practice for the fall.
Well, I think next year we'll have four elections now. Are you sure? Or is it just because of the primary? General, okay, I was trying to think, there was not, there's not a federal primary, is there next year? No, so.
And so just for the general public, um, is it every precinct in the rec center?
Everything will still be at the rec center, correct? Yeah, we, I know, we may have to look at change. Future.
Twenty-two general elections.
Yep, but for this one, it's all right there.
Yep, so that'll be up February, Tuesday, February eighth, seven AM to eight PM at the Hutchinson Rec Center, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think now you can probably go to Andy, uh, the, Andy's item, that's, um, we still have five minutes before it's.
Sure, so unfinished business, we have, um, item number thirteen. Uh, the second reading and adoption of ordinance number two one dash eight two seven, an ordinance authorizing the sale of municipally-owned land to Hutch Uptown Commons LLC.
Sorry, I keep, don't, not looking at the agenda, thinking you're next on it, but. Yeah, I know, so. This is, I believe, the land that, um, this is the old, no, wait a minute, this is the old Franklin House site, correct? So, um, there hasn't been any changes since the, the first reading of that, of that ordinance. Correct? So I'm just asking if you can say your second reading and adoption of that.
Okay, I'm just looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mary and a second by Pat. Um, any other discussion? They're all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Before we move on, I can tell you that, uh, we had our historic Hutchinson meeting last night, and we are going to be moving that building up to the Harrington rental house. We voted on it, and it's going to get done, so. That's my update.
Yeah, I did get an email from Jim today. We'll have to probably, there'll probably have to be some formal acceptance of that by the council, so we'll probably have to do that in a future meeting, but it sounds like you guys were able to find the funds to get that done, so.
Right.
Just great.
All right, well, that's great. Um, so new business, Andy. Um, we have, uh, I, agenda item fourteen, it's the resolution number one five three eight one, resolution authorizing the prepayment and redemption of outstanding series two oh thirteen A bonds.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, or, uh, Chad, I should say, and council members?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor. Uh, he's actually the treasurer for the EDA as well.
Yes, very stressful position.
Yes, it is. So, um, you recall back a few years ago, the council committed three million dollars of community improvement funds to be used towards the new police facility. And throughout the last year or so, we found it was more financially, uh, beneficial to the city to use a portion of those funds to pay off existing debt rather than to use the whole balance, um, towards the, the construction costs. So we came to you in, in the summer of twenty-one to get your authorization to prepay, uh, the debt series for the two thousand nine through two thousand twelve issues. And now tonight, we're here to ask that you approve, uh, prepaying the two thousand thirteen debt issue as well. And the reason we're coming a little later is because this issue couldn't be prepaid until February first of twenty twenty-two, so that's why it's a little later than the other prepayments. Um, so I wanted to show you a few slides here tonight, just to give you a better understanding, hopefully. Um, this first pie chart shows that with all our early payoffs, it's just a little under three point five million dollars needed to make these payoffs, and the funding sources are from our debt service funds, and then, uh, a portion of the three million dollars that you committed from the community improvement fund. So we had a little over two million dollars sitting in our debt service funds that we could utilize, and then that leaves a balance of a little over one point four seven million needed from that three million set aside, um, to be able to make these debt payoffs. I should actually, I don't know if I can make this full screen. So this next slide shows, I thought it'd be beneficial to show you how that three million was being utilized. As we talked on the prior. Um, as we talked on the prior slide, a good chunk of it's being used for that early debt retirement, a little over one point four seven. Uh, million. I can't get it to go full screen, I'm sorry. Um, but then we've also used about nine hundred and eight thousand for some preliminary and acquisition costs already. Leaving us a balance of about six hundred eighteen thousand um, to be applied towards remaining project costs on the facility. So about forty nine percent of that three million was devoted to the early retirements of our debt and about fifty one percent towards actual project costs. So I know we've looked at these debt levies um, quite a few times, but I just wanted to show you the benefit of these early retirements. So this is our debt plan from back in two thousand twenty before we added any debt for the police facility. And the area to focus on i- is in on the top of the bars in the early years, kind of shaded, I guess it's brownish orange. That's the area um, of our early retirement, uh, the debt that we're early retiring here, so. Over the course of seven years from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty eight, that's about three point three million of debt levy taxes. That can now be redirected to pay the debt on the police facility, so kind of keep that area in mind of the graph when I go to the. Next graph that Matt had shown in the truth and taxation meeting and also again tonight. You can see in those early years with now we've added the police facility debt in yellow, in those early years, we were able to. Front end load a lot more debt, pay off a lot more on the front end, which helps us on the back end, so. If that doesn't make you dizzy enough with numbers. I got one more slide that I was hoping would show the benefit of the early repayments, so. The top line would be our debt levy if we didn't use any of the three million dollars for the debt retirements and instead. Applied all the three million towards the the P D's project costs. The dashed line represents the levy that we just looked at on the prior slide that Matt showed in the truth and taxation meeting, which is. What I would call now our our debt plan at the end of twenty twenty one, so you can see that difference between the dashed line and the top purple line. Is really the savings in our debt levy from doing these early retirements, so I was hoping to. Hope that makes sense to you guys and see the benefit of these early retirements.
So Andy wasn't on top of that too, the interest rates that we were paying on the debt, we were just not going to make that up in in savings.
Right, right, um, we paid off interest rates, while this one you're looking at tonight, the interest rates we're paying off are three to three and a half percent. And we're replacing it with uh, one percent or a little under that even maybe, um. At least in the early parts of the of the police facility debt, the interest rates are really low and then of course, the interest rates grow higher as you. You go out to further years, but um, just wanted to give you a snapshot of a couple of different things there with the prepayments and uh. More beneficially, how your three million was being spent, so I'll open it up to any questions you may have and if no questions, I ask that you approve this resolution tonight.
Any questions for Andy? If not, we're looking for a motion to approve or deny it, motion to approve, resolution one, five, three, eight, one. David, you second?
Second.
All right, so um, we have a motion by Pat and a second by Dave, um, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. All right, so it is after six o'clock, so we have a public hearing. Uh, we have a modification to the development program for development district number four and the creation of a tax increment financing plan. For the establishment of a TIF district number four dash twenty two, a redevelopment district. Um, we have two um, resolutions, um, it's resolution one, five, three, or one, five, three, eight, three. Resolution approving a modification of the development development program for development district, it's one of D's in a row. Um, November four or number four and the creation of a tax increment financing plan. For the establishment of TIF district number four twenty two, a redevelopment district. And then B is a resolution one, five, three, eight, four, resolution approving the terms of a thirty thousand dollar tax increment. Interfund loan in connection with TIF district number four twenty two. So.
Okay.
All right, Miles.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, um, actually, this is going to be a quite a bit shorter than originally planned. Um, I'm going to give you a quick overview of the project and then uh, when it gets to the actual public hearing part, we're just going to ask for a continuance. And I'll explain that, um, seeing the work here, there we go. Um, basically, the project is the redevelopment of the Jorgensen Hotel located at two Main Street South. Um, several months back, we were approached by a developer and it's the actually the same developer who did the Cobblestone Inn. On highway seven and fifteen, um, but we were approached by a developer and he said, you know, we think uh, we see some real potential in this building. And we'd like to explore um, putting this thing back into circulation, so um, the original building was built in nineteen sixteen. And uh, it functioned as a hotel up until the early, I think the early nineteen seventies was the last time, if I understood it right. So right now, um, the building, the first floor, it's been redeveloped by the current ownership and that's primarily offices and the chamber has their offices there. And then the upper two levels are just um, vacant, I'll just say vacant and and in pretty tough shape. The proposal for the redevelopment is to put in a twenty four room upscale hotel, so I mean, if this thing goes according to plan. The idea would be that this is going to be the top, these will be the top rooms in Hutchinson, this will be two hundred dollars a night and more. Um, but very nice, uh, the developer had originally thought about. Well, originally, he explored the possibility of adding one or two levels on top of the existing building. And that has since been determined not, it's just not feasible to do it, um, so that's that's all, so the idea is just to keep the existing building. At the same three levels that it has today and then redevelop the upper levels and then create these four, the twenty four hotel rooms. So in order to do that, they're going to put in a new elevator, there needs to be a new roof, there's going to be new windows, they need to tuck point. All the brickwork on the outside, um, there's some other issues with the building that need to get fixed up and then. The rooms themselves need to get framed up and built on those two levels, um, and in order, excuse me. In order for the project to work, you know, some level of public assistance is probably going to be needed, um. The developer contacted me um, yesterday, I think it was just yesterday, in fact. And said, hey, we need a little bit more time to get our numbers together to really understand what it's going to take to redevelop it, so. They need to do more research and until they do that, we're really not prepared to move ahead, so I think. What the request is of the city council tonight would be just a motion to continue the public hearing until six P M on January twenty fifth. Then by that time, the developer said, hey, I should have all my numbers together, that'll give us an opportunity to do our analysis on our side. Just to make sure that public assistance is merited and it's actually needed. And then we'll come back and go through the steps to put this in place and then in January, so I'll be happy to answer any questions, I guess.
And do you have any questions for Miles?
No questions, I I'm excited that they can get something done, if you guys can work with them to make it. I've been here my whole life and I remember actually when people still rented rooms there, but it'd be pretty neat to, if it could be repurposed and affordable and. Add a lot to the dome dome.
And uh, brought back as a hotel of all things, I mean, how exciting is that?
There was a little cafe corner in there.
Miles is going to bring that back as a fundraiser for the E D A.
We we might rely on the neighbors for that type of thing.
It was a busy hotel at one time. Totally.
All right, so we're just looking for a motion for the continuance, correct?
Get motion to continue the public hearing, so.
Second. Uh, all right, we have a motion for continuance by Dave and a second by Pat, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. All right, we have a second public hearing tonight for resolution number one, five, three, eight, four, uh, resolution approving the terms of a. Or no, I'm on the next, I'm on the wrong one, um, I agenda item number ten, the proposed revision of business subsidy goals. For Hutchinson Cobble LLC, resolution number one, five, three, eight, five, a resolution adopting revised business subsidy goals. Job creation for Hutch Cobble LLC.
Okay, um, mayor and council, um, this is relating to the Cobblestonian Hotel. Um, on seven and fifteen and I'm going to give you a little bit of a background of how we got here and then what's being requested tonight. So just to kind of um, look back in history a little bit, several years ago, um, that whole corner was undeveloped. And prior to that, there were some gas stations on the corner, um, I think Quade Electric was in there somewhere. Uh, it was just a totally different looking place, um, anyways, when when the state came through and rebuilt highway seven. They purchased all of those properties and then those were packaged up and then the city had an opportunity to buy them, so. The city bought them several years back for a nominal price, I think eighteen thousand dollars and we had this here lot that stretched all the way around the corner. From highway fifteen all the way back to Prospect Street and then we're looking for opportunities to get that redeveloped. Um, and then so along came developer and it's actually the same developer that's going to do the Jorgensen Hotel for us. But he had a vision of a hotel on that site and as we looked into it further and further. Um, you know, it was, it was discovered that there was some leftover uh, contamination of the soils on that site. From the time when the gas stations used to be there, so that made development costs a little bit higher than what the project was going to support. So at that time, we put in place uh, what's called the soils condition TIF district. That would just help offset some of the costs that were directly related to the soil contamination, so we did that a few years back. And the project's been a big success, I mean, I think it's a great asset to the community, I know the hotel's doing very well. Developer's very happy, everything went really good, um, as part of providing the public assistance though. We set up a, we set a goal for the creation of a certain number of jobs and when we did that. I just went back to the developer and I asked him, I go, well, what's what's a realistic number? At that time, he said, well, let's say, let's say eleven and a half full time equivalents would be the number of jobs that get created. For the hotel, you know, with cleaning staff and maintenance and what have you, um, so that was what the goal was that was set. At the time that we provided the public assistance, since that time, I think it's been discovered that we're just not going to get. To that level of job creation, it's just not going to happen, part of that is just changes within the hospitality industry. You know, they want to be as efficient as possible and so they they really work hard to uh, just make operations. Um, as efficient as can be, that can be accomplished with as few people as can be, because you know, like any business, you want to minimize your costs and so forth. So changes in the industry and then along with that, it's just super hard to hire folks nowadays anyway. So I mean, on both sides, it's really just very difficult, so uh, the developer had sent us a letter and asked. You know, can we revisit this job creation goal, can we back it down from the eleven and a half and and make it seven and a half? Um, and um, I think it's in the city's interest to consider this as well, um. Part of when you're setting up a TIF district and so forth, you're always kind of looking at the business subsidies law, this is Minnesota state statute. That kind of governs how public assistance is awarded and one of the provisions within the law requires. A clawback, a return, if they don't create the jobs, then the the company or whatever, they need to return some of the public assistance. In this case, that probably doesn't make any sense because we just provided enough public assistance to offset the cost of. Dealing with the soil contamination, um, in in order for them to pay that back, I mean, it would. The only thing it would really accomplish is just hurt the business and that's not in our goal, as 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 not in our interest. Uh, as the community, I don't think, so for us, the primary goal of the project was just get the site redeveloped. The job creation, that was kind of bonus and not not really one of the primary goals. So I think that's really what's being requested of the council tonight, if they would be willing to consider just reducing that job creation number to a level. That's attainable, um, like I said, we're looking hopefully to promote, to reset the job creation goal. From eleven and a half full time equivalents to seven and a half full time equivalents and again. Uh, job creation, that was never really the big focus of the project, we just wanted to get that site redeveloped and and create an asset for the community. So um, I have to kind of go through all the little pieces of the business subsidy whenever we set these things up, so I'm, I have a few slides here. Just to talk about what kind of assistance was provided and so forth, so like I said, it was a soils condition TIF district to offset the soil contamination. And the total estimated assistance that was going to be provided is three hundred and forty five thousand and a little bit more plus interest. And um, the purpose of the of the assistance was, they give you a bunch of different options in the statute. So these are the ones that fit the best, so one was to stabilize the community, second one was to increase the tax base of the community. The measurable, specific, tangible goals, we would uh, request that that be set at seven and a half full time equivalent jobs. And then the other goal is redevelopment of the property and if they don't uh, meet the goals, then they have to repay. The assistance or at least part of the assistance plus interest and that's what we're trying to avoid tonight, actually. Statement of why the assistance is needed, um, like I said, just to offset the cost of environmental remediation. And to make the project feasible for the developer to do, um, then they have to make a commitment to continue operations for five years, that's done. And this has all been reviewed by the Economic Development Authority, we discussed it at the E D A board and they recognized that. It was redeveloping that location was the goal, not so much the job, so they're recommending adoption of the revised job creation goal. So the request tonight would be just approval of the resolution, which would reset that job creation goal to seven and a half full time equivalents. Uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Miles?
Well, you're uh, three hundred and forty five thousand in uh, tax increment, is that what you got back there?
Correct, yep.
So. What are you saying, we're going to, we're going to now take that down to what?
No, that's going to stay exactly the same.
So we're eventually going to get the money back?
No, I mean, our goal is to provide public assistance in the amount of three hundred and forty five thousand, that's what we want to do.
So where is the interest from?
Oh, well, that's kind of hard to explain, uh. I don't know, I don't even know if I can explain it, um, there's an interest component to it, it's principal and interest and. I I, we always set an interest rate because what happens is that the developer, we never, we never front load any of the money. We're just paying it each year, as they pay the property taxes to the city or to the county technically, comes back to the city. Then two times a year, we will make a check out to the developer up to this amount. So in order for the developer to do the project though, they need to pay for all those costs on the front end. Right, when they were building the building, that's when they had to take care of the soils and all that stuff, so they had to go out and get a loan from a bank for this. The principal amount was the three hundred and forty five thousand, they're paying principal plus interest back to the bank. And then for our side, we pay principal plus interest back to the developer, but all the money that originates with the property owner. Those guys paying their property taxes, so.
I think the easiest way to plan, explain tax increment financing and why it's used as an economic development tool is. It takes in the increased, it takes into consideration the increased value of a property, so. I'm just going to use a rough number, let's say the the hotel creates a hundred thousand dollars in property taxes every year. The taxpayers of Hutchinson will see eighty, will will receive eighty thousand of that and then the other twenty thousand goes to help pay for that. TIP district, so your first, was this a ten year, I don't remember what the redevelopment district, fifteen years?
Yeah, for the soils condition. I can't remember the number of years, but it was going to generate enough tax increment that we were going to get it paid off in like four or five years.
Okay.
So it's really short term.
Yeah, so now, once that gets paid off, then basically this, the public receives the full tax benefit.
Yep, so.
From that, so, and so it's not necessar- so. If you wanna say the downside to the public is that they're not receiving the, they're not receiving the full.
Tax.
Tax. Benefit of a property in the initial five, ten, fifteen years. And then eventually the whole property tax comes on the role of the, of the taxpayers, so it's not like we've cut them a check. One cents, um, it's really taking that added value and reinvesting it into the property or the building. So, and that would be the same thing with the Jorgensen Hotel if.
I was actually kinda saving this for January, but. My little, my little explanation of how tax increment financing works, so I mean. Today, let's pretend we have a blighted building and it's got a very low value for tax purposes. And let's just pretend it pays five hundred dollars a year in, in taxes, then you get rid of that and you make a nice new development. It's got a much higher value, it's gonna pay much more property taxes. When you do the tax increment financing, you're gonna capture the difference, so the twenty thousand minus the original amount. That nineteen thousand five hundred, that's the so-called tax increment and that you can plow back into the project. To help offset certain costs, like contaminated soils or what have you, and then once the district. You know, each district, it only goes for a certain number of years or a certain dollar amount. Once you hit that threshold, then it falls off and then the whole money, the whole amount goes just.
Back on the road.
Back into the, into the pot for the community, if that makes sense, so, um, yeah, does that make sense?
Yeah, and these are only ever used on projects that would never happen without them.
Correct.
That's, and that by state law, you, there has to be, you have to be able to show the need for. There's a but-for test and.
Yes.
Couple other things that, 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 that the developer has to go through.
Right, you know, and we did a pretty extensive analysis on Cobblestoneian, just to make sure that that was a real need. So we had an independent firm that we hired that did the analysis and they said, yeah, this is all legit, so.
It's a good asset to our city.
Yes, and, and I mean, um, with, with tax increment financing, I mean, it just helps make good projects happen. You know, and State Theater was one, Cornerstone Commons is another one and I don't think anybody would argue that those are, you know. Not worth it, they surely are worth it, so, yeah. So, um, yeah, I think for, for the job creation, we're just looking to. Reset that number to seven point five jobs, full uh, full-time equivalents. Uh, rather than the eleven point five, so we were just over optimistic.
I think Miles, if I'm catching this, I mean, eleven point five would have been ideal, it was, that number wasn't tied into whether or not. The tax increment financing was gonna happen, it was more about taking, making it available for that person to afford that property.
Correct, yes.
I mean, the slide you had with the lack of workers.
Yeah.
That's being felt everywhere, I can see where they probably have a hard time doing that, I myself don't. I mean, I, it sounds like we're giving them a gift, but I mean, he also, or whoever the investors are, took a lot of money and put in a nice development there. So I mean, that's make sense, it's worth cutting that back.
Yeah, I mean, it was more about creating tax revenue than anything has and it will going forward, so. Alright, does anybody else have any questions for Miles?
Nope.
So we'll open the public hearing for public comment, does anybody in the audience have anything that they want to add or ask about? Alright, looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Second. Alright, we have a motion by Mary and a second by Pat to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Alright, then I'm looking for a motion to approve or deny resolution number one five three eight five.
Motion to approve. Five, three, five.
Alright, so we'll just flip them, we have a motion by Pat and a second by Mary, um, to approve the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, thank you, Miles.
Hey, thank you very much.
Alright, um, next we have governance, uh, we have minutes and reports from committees, boards or commissions. Um, A, we have Hutchinson Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board Minutes from October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Um, well, skip B for something, um, C is Library Board Minutes from October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Um, D, the Hutchinson Economic Development Authority Board Minutes from October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. E, we have the Public Arts Commission Minutes from November tenth, twenty twenty-one. Alright, next we'll have staff updates, um, Kent, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, just uh, three things, yeah, touch on quickly, uh, money one pavement management program, uh. Our bid opening is tomorrow, so get a lot of interest on, on that project, uh, the final. Cost estimate was just short at two point three million, so. Uh, based on the interest, I think we're gonna probably do better than that, so. Uh, definitely should pay off giving that project out, out for bids early here.
Which one was that, Kent?
Uh, pavement management program, so that'd be the wrong ways to be at the west of the rec center there, finishing up that storm sewer system. Uh, speaking of uh, s- stormwater in the leg, stormwater ponds uh, this time of year, just wanna mention uh, stay off of it. Uh, that's what it boils down to, um, uh, obviously, uh, due to the weather conditions we've had and uh, you know. Being relatively warm going into the fall and the snow that we've received on, on top of. Relatively thin ice, I believe that exists on the majority of those ponds. And uh, sounds like the rain and the warm weather we're gonna get tomorrow, so, yeah, people need to stay out those ponds. Water levels, even if there's ice on them, uh, water usually is moving beneath them, that's what they're designed to do, so. Just wanna get that out there. Then lastly, following up on a question uh, that was raised at the council meeting. With the last council meeting with respect to the highway seven and twenty-two intersection and future improvements at that intersection. Uh, MINDOT is doing a hi- just finalizing the highway seven safety plan. From the Cover County border on the, on the east end, uh, up to Hutchinson municipal limits. Uh, albeit, it was decided that that study would not include this particular intersection. It's being analyzed as part of the northeast ring road. Effort, study effort that, that, that between the city, the county and the state, uh, we're working on and it's been developing for the last year or so. Uh, there was an intersection control evaluation performed on that, that intersection as part of that study effort. Uh, that's basically, you know, an exercise, a formal exercise to analyze an intersection. Per MINDOT standards and, and make an ultimately make an intersection control decision, you know. Stop conditions, signal system, roundabout, uh, passing lanes, turn lanes, stuff of that nature. Uh, the, at the end, the, the recommendation is a roundabout at that intersection, uh. Albeit, you know, it's un, it's unknown what's gonna happen, if the northeast ring road will ever happen, you know. And what timeframe, so at this point, I think the, the good news is MINDOT has requested that. Intersection control evaluation to be finalized by the consultant involved in the northeast ring road effort. Uh, and I believe they're asking questions of the consultants, so that's a good sign that they are. Doing some homework on it internally to potentially identify and scope a project, you know, prior to a decision being made. On the northeast ring road, obviously, if they got into the design phase, they would probably make some. Assumptions, I guess, at, at the very least, uh, for a fourth leg to be extended north, so it was configured. To have the compatibility to build a leg to the north at some point in the future. All of this plays into, as you, everybody's pretty much well aware of, the federal infrastructure. Dollars that were recently approved, uh, the state, you know, and then ultimately the cities and the counties are gonna receive a share of that. Uh, and what we're hearing is a large amount of that dollars that's gonna be metered down to the cities and the counties is gonna be. Through the highway safety improvement program, which this project, this intersection project would uh, play into. Pretty much uh, directly, so, good news on that front, otherwise, just uh. Thinking a little bit here, projects that between myself and county staff. Uh, both the McCloud County and Meeker County for that matter, have identified to push with that infrastructure funding in mind. Uh, is the uh, highway fifteen passing lanes, there was a study done, oh heck, it's been a seven, eight, nine years ago. To identify three sets of passing lanes between, between Hutchinson and I ninety-four. So that study is, is out there, uh, there were some good results, some good opportunities identified within that study, so. You know, from staff standpoint and like my, like I said, and from Meeker and McCloud County were, were big advocates. That the MINDOT moves on that effort at some point in time, and then the other one is uh, highway seven. Or excuse me, highway twenty-two and uh, two twelve, ultimately the connectivity. Of uh, highway twenty-two, which is Hutchinson's interregional corridor, identified as such by the state. Uh, and that's uh, basically the route that takes priority in MINDOT's mind. To connect Hutchinson to the uh, four-lane highway system, ultimately to the interstate system, so. Every community over ten thousand population across the state has an. Uh, interregional corridor system identified to basically get them routed to the interstate system, so. That's a high priority for Hutchinson, always has been, and uh, we're gonna keep pushing on that front, there was a study completed in Glencoe. Uh, ultimately that identified three routes of twenty-two to connect it into two twelve. And uh, take it off of the, the wandering route through town as it exists today, that's it.
Alright, thank you, Kent, uh, Mark, did you have anything tonight?
One thing, have a great Christmas.
Thank you, Mark. Matt, did you have anything tonight?
Oh, in regards to Christmas, uh, city offices will be closed Friday, um, December twenty-fourth, in observance of the. Christmas holiday and then just married, uh, we have union negotiations on Tuesday, so, twenty-first, so that's it for me.
Alright, thank you, Matt. Uh, Mary, we'll start with you tonight, welcome back from your big trip.
Oh, yes, good to be back.
Bring in the warm weather with you too, it sounds loud, so.
Well, yeah, but just for a tiny bit. I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, you know, it's that's time of the year, if you're out shopping, shop local. All of our shops can use them, people coming in, enjoy your families, drive safe. And just have a blessed Christmas.
Alright, thank you, um, Dave?
Yeah, just have everyone have a the Merryest Christmas that they can and uh, and a blessed New Year.
Thank you, Pat?
I echo those sentiments, uh, you know, spend time with family, it's pretty important and uh.
Absolutely.
Again, the shop Hutchinson is a great thing, you don't have to drive and have to deal crowds and keep the businesses going.
Alright, thank you, um, well, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and uh, we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Pat, a second by Mary, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes, we're adjourned.
Z and K G L B with this week's sound advice for your business. When is the last time you had a brand health checkup for your business? Some business owners mistakenly think that a brand is built simply around their business name, location and their marketing. But your brand is the sum of everything your customers and prospects hear, see, feel and experience. Your brand is who you are, what you do.